25-0818 SP.
We'd like to remind everyone to please silence your mobile devices. To help with sound quality, make sure to speak clearly and directly into your microphone. Emu your microphone when you're not speaking. If anyone is having trouble hearing at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand and someone will bring you an audio assistance device. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Riddell.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
You're here.
Commissioner Brody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Here.
Mayor Riley.
Here.
City Manager Rose.
Here.
City Attorney Pyburn.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you all very much. I would like to start off this meeting by saying thank you for participating. Thank you to the residents for being here. Thank you for our neighbors of Deerfield being here. Our concern for this very important matter has been over years and decades. Our commissioners, our city manager, our city attorney, everyone has worked diligently to reach a settlement. Is it going to make everyone happy? No, but that's what compromise is all about. I have to say, it was a valiant effort. It was a valiant fight for our residents. I wish we weren't here this evening, but we are. And we have to do what's responsible and our fiduciary commitment to our residents. We have to do what's right for all, and that's why we are here today. Our city manager and our city attorney have bruises and battle wounds, and I thank you very much for those efforts. I'd like to turn this now over to our city attorney, Terrell Pyburn.
Thank you, Mayor Riley. Just some preliminary procedural issues I need to address. This meeting is being conducted live with a physical quorum present. The material for today's meeting is available online at coconut creek.net. Anyone wishing to appeal any decision made will need a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim recording of the proceedings is made, including the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. The archive of this meeting may be requested from the city clerk or may be heard online at coconut creek.net. If you haven't already, please silence your mobile devices. If you must take a phone call, please excuse yourself and step outside. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained throughout the meeting. Full call outbursts, cheering, cheering, or applause can impair the rights of others and derail the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-129, a resolution considering the Monarch Hill litigation settlement agreement among the cities of Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach, as well as Broward County and Waste Management, Inc. of Florida pertaining to the Monarch Hill landfill. Is there a motion and a second to move the agenda item four for discussion?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Commissioner Brody. City Attorney, please.
Thank you. I'm going to present to you an overview of the proposed Monarch Hill litigation settlement agreement that is before you for consideration tonight. When I am done, we do have Ralph DeMayo, who is our special counsel from Tallahassee on Zoom with Gilde Law, and he may say a few words once I am done giving you an overview. The parties to the proposed settlement agreement include Broward County, the city of Coconut Creek, the city of Deerfield Beach, and Waste Management, Inc. of Florida. Waste Management, Inc. of Florida owns and operates the Monarch Hill landfill in unincorporated Broward County and sought both vertical to raise the height from 225 feet to 325 feet and horizontal to add 24.2 acres of land from where the former North Waste to Energy Plant was. They sought those expansions from Broward County, and Broward County approved enabling ordinances 2025-10 and 2025-11, which pertain to the horizontal expansion, and 2025-13, which pertained to the vertical increase on February 25th of 2025. Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach then filed lawsuits and administrative challenges opposing the expansions, and Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach vehemently opposed and objected to the proposed applications by Waste Management every single step of the way from the inception in February of 2020. I attached as backup to the materials tonight a timeline of Coconut Creek's responses to Waste Management's expansion applications to illustrate this point in detail. And that timeline consists of approximately eight pages of events and happenings in which Coconut Creek officials were involved every step of the way. I have provided just a smattering of those events here in the PowerPoint presentation. But the highlights are that city officials began objecting as soon as the first application was filed in February of 2020. City staff and commissioners attended the Land Planning Agency and Broward County Planning Council meetings and several county commission meetings between 2020 and 2025, and stated their objections on the record, and launched ambassadors and Citizens Academy alumni and neighborhood groups into action. The city arranged for transportation to meetings downtown and spoke to community groups, as is illustrated on these slides. The city notified the county of its intent to file suit after the first reading of the ordinances by Broward County in January of 2028, and then proceeded, I'm sorry, in January, on January 28th of 2025, and then proceeded with filing two lawsuits and a Chapter 164 intergovernmental dispute resolution process, which is required by state law, after the second reading of the ordinances in February of this year. The city has been heavily engaged in litigation since early March of this year and has had several rounds of discovery, multiple hearings, multiple depositions, and is set for trial next week in one of the cases if this settlement agreement is not approved. As you can see, I just put a smattering of those examples, and it's several slides even. And this is just to illustrate the point of what is coming up ahead in the litigation with depositions this week if we do not settle this today, as well as the trial next week, and then the joint board meeting pursuant to Chapter 164, the intergovernmental dispute resolution process, would take place next Thursday, August 28th, if it's not approved today. Some key terms of the settlement include: the expansion is limited to the footprint and height authorized in the 2025 Expansion Impacts Agreement. The Expansion Impacts Agreement is an agreement between Broward County and Waste Management, which was also attached as backup to the settlement agreement on the agenda this evening, and that agreement was also attached as backup to Broward County's ordinances that they approved in February of 2025. The proposed settlement agreement also provides for no future horizontal or vertical expansions beyond those limits, regardless of otherwise permissible law. Waste Management also agrees not to operate any other landfill within one mile of the site. Why is that important? Because Waste Management owns other properties near the landfill, and we wanted to make abundantly clear that just because they're agreeing to no future expansion of the footprint, that they couldn't just jump across the street to one of the other properties that they own outside of the confines of the four streets of Wiles Road, Powerline Sample, and the Turnpike, and just create another landfill on one of those other properties. So we wanted to make that clear. The expansion, again, is limited to the 2025 approvals, meaning the 100-foot increase and the 24 acres that Broward County approved in February, but that provides for approximately 25 million cubic yards and equates to approximately 25 more years of capacity. At that time, once that limit is reached, the landfill would be closed. We tried to get a more certain timeframe to close the landfill, but we were told that the closure timing has to remain slightly flexible due to market changes, storms, and regulatory variables, including at the federal and state level. And so therefore, again, the landfill will close once the 25 million cubic yards is reached, which we believe, and everybody who is a party to this agreement believes, will be accomplished within approximately 25 years. Waste Management must also record this agreement through a declaration of restrictive covenants that will memorialize the terms of our agreement, meaning that for future commissions and future staff will not be able to, there won't be the opportunity for people to forget or for time to pass and for no one to be aware that we have made this deal because it will be recorded in the public records. Those restrictions will be memorialized there, and the only way that they can be changed is by Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach city commissions voting to undo it. And it will be up to Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach to enforce it. I'm going to skip ahead for just a second. Actually, so there is also the provision for post-closure planning. The parties will meet within five years of settlement to discuss the potential for public reuse. And five years before the closure, all of the parties will have to negotiate in good faith for recreational passive reuse of the landfill. There is also the provision of environmental and operational controls, including but not limited to odor misting systems, intermediate cover, expanded gas collection, and quarterly emissions testing with reports shared with cities. There will also be the provision for traffic and litter. Traffic management plan must be put in place by Waste Management, and they will come up with a plan to control traffic directly or indirectly related to going in and out of the landfill. In addition, they will agree to continue the cleanup of litter directly in front of the landfill on Wiles Road, as they have been doing, and they will continue to do that twice a week. In addition, they will reimburse Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach $15,000 annually for litter mitigation on Wiles, Sample, Powerline, and Lions Road and around the perimeter of the landfill. This is something that we've been undertaking for a while now, and so has Deerfield Beach, and so they're just going to reimburse us for those costs. Additionally, there are increased groundwater monitoring protections, including increased number and frequency of placement of wells. This goes above and beyond what is required by state law, as well as increased hydrogeologic and geotechnical studies and more transparent reporting to the cities. There is also the provision for professional wildlife program using deterrents such as raptors, effigies, and permits for nuisance bird control through wildlife experts. Additionally, there will be waste disposal limits. Only household and commercial waste, actually, the waste disposal restrictions have to do with Class III and CND will only be allowed after September 30th of 2027. Why September 30th of 2027? Because there are current agreements in place to dispose of other types of waste up until that point. Those agreements are set to expire at that time. In addition, it is important to note that our 2015 settlement agreement that provides for a limitation on limited waste, also known as municipal solid waste, or the stinky stuff, that limitation will remain in place. And so there still will only be able, they will only be able to dispose of 175,000 tons of the stinky waste there until September 30th of 2027, and then after September 30th of 2027, it will go to Class III and CND. Again, CND is construction and demolition debris. There will also be a maximum cap of waste from outside of Broward County annually of no more than 20%, and that's pursuant to the agreement that Waste Management had already entered into with Broward County that was approved as part of the ordinance approval for the expansion in February of this year. Exceptions include a state of emergency declaring a state of emergency for many portions of southeast Florida from Palm Beach County South. Under our current 2015 settlement agreement, that state of emergency exception applies statewide, so this is a much more narrow exception, which is to our benefit. Additionally, Waste Management will not demolish the landfill gas-to-energy plant for approximately 10 years unless operation becomes technically unfeasible. Waste Management must supply the landfill gas to Broward County's planned wastewater sludge dryer, supporting renewable energy and circular economy goals. I have spoken with officials at Broward County, and they have stated, because their agreement with Waste Management provides that it's at the county's discretion whether or not they build this. They have stated at this point in time, they have not decided whether or not they're going to build it, but they will advise the cities Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach if they do move ahead with this, and they have assured us in writing that it will not be located at the landfill or at the wastewater treatment plant on Copens Road. As for financial commitments from Waste Management and Broward County to the cities, as I mentioned earlier, there will be an annual litter mitigation payment of $15,000 per city from Waste Management for the cleanup we've already been doing. Additionally, the county receives a host charge from Waste Management pursuant to their agreement that they entered into in February of this year. And under this proposed settlement agreement, the cities will be able to claim up to 5% of the host charge for the first five years of their receipt of that payment for unique impacts. And those particular unique impacts are denoted in Exhibit B to the agreement. They can be expanded upon agreement of all of the parties, but we did lay out some particular items in advance that won't require any additional approval. And those items that we could be reimbursed through the host fee for include environmental monitoring for compliance with the settlement agreement conditions, maintenance activities such as keeping roads, properties, and waterways safe, and minimizing and mitigating environmental hazards, as well as street sweeping, water tank trucks, rehabilitation of roadway markings, pressure washing of curbs and medians, and stormwater infrastructure cleaning. It also provides for right-of-way enhancements to public right-of-way median swales, buffers, and landscaping within two miles of the landfill property. It also provides for traffic enforcement-related costs for regulating commercial and waste vehicles that will be entering and exiting the landfill. And then for, this is more specific to Deerfield Beach, it provides for public safety service expenses to be reimbursed because Deerfield Beach has a closest unit response agreement with the landfill property. There is also a provision for renaming of the landfill. And basically, the agreement provides that the landfill will be renamed within five years of expansion approvals. The name cannot include the words Monarch, Butterfly, city names of Coconut Creek or Deerfield Beach, or Broward without consent. They, Waste Management, requested the five-year time period because they will not undertake this until all of the permits have been approved for the expansions by Broward County, which they believe will take approximately two years. And they have to change all of their corporate documents at the state level and with the IRS, and that will take some time. Upon execution of this agreement, if you agree to move forward with the settlement, Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach will be required to dismiss all lawsuits with prejudice, meaning that we cannot refile as it relates to these most recent approvals by Broward County only. There will be a mutual release of all claims. And the cities and county may enforce obligations directly. If there is a breach under the agreement and the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants, it provides for 30 days to cure. After that, we will have the ability to pursue all legal remedies available by law. And as I mentioned earlier, our 2015 settlement agreement will remain in place except to the extent of any direct conflict. So the good thing there is we will still enjoy the benefit of the restrictions on the amount of sludge and grit and screenings that go into the landfill, in addition to the limited waste for the next two years until it kicks over into that Class III and CND-only waste. And the agreement will be void if the required permits for the horizontal and vertical expansion are not obtained. With that, I am going to turn it over to Ralph DeMayo with Gilde Law. He is our special counsel, who is with us on Zoom, and he's going to just make a few more statements.
Thank you, Terrell. It's a pleasure to be here today. As Terrell mentioned, the team has been working very, very hard for both communities to try to reach a reasonable resolution, and we believe we've done that. There are two lawsuits pending, one of which is scheduled to go to trial before the Division of Administrative Hearings next week, and the other one is on hold pending further discussions among the parties. I think the important thing to note here is that when we started down this road, the county and Waste Management were unwilling to provide any concessions whatsoever. They were going to force us to fight them, and that's what we did. And after thousands and thousands of documents being disclosed and reviewed, and dozens of fact and expert witnesses being deposed, we reached the point where we are now. And in my opinion, this is an unprecedented settlement because, for the first time, and I know Terrell went over some of these, but I think they bear repeating, for the first time during the history of this project, I believe the two communities are going to achieve real benefit. Number one, the landfill footprint and height expansion will not go beyond 2025. There are landfills in this country that go up 500 feet, so you should not take for granted the fact that this is being capped at 325. When we first went down this road, Waste Management was unwilling to agree to that. Also, as mentioned, there will not be any landfill expansions within one mile of the existing.
Pardon me, Ralph. Can you speak a little bit louder?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sure, I'll move a little closer to the screen. So, the closure of the landfill will be within approximately 25 years from the 2025 expansion completion. This is also significant because, in the beginning, the county and Waste Management were unwilling to agree to any deadline for closure. The perhaps most important legal aspect of this is that the restrictive covenants will guarantee this agreement will be enforceable. The other aspect that is significant to me, as a longtime environmental lawyer, is you have enhanced environmental controls on such things as odor, traffic, litter, groundwater monitoring, bird abatement, and the like. Those are concessions that go beyond what Waste Management would be required to do otherwise under a normal permit scenario, and they are significant. There's also a limit, as you heard, on the sources of waste and the types of waste. The gas-to-energy plant will remain in place. There are financial commitments to address the impacts associated with the landfill expansion, provisions for reuse planning after the lifetime of the landfill reaches an end, what will happen to it. The cities will be a part of those discussions, enhanced landscaping to ensure that there's minimal visual impairment, the renaming, and then all the parties pay their own attorney's fees. Couple more points that I'd like to make. Even if Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach win at the trial, the appeal goes to the governor and cabinet. The governor and cabinet, of course, is a very political body, and there's no way to predict reasonably what they might do there. Who will they favor? Will they favor these cities, or will they favor Waste Management in the county? So there's a risk there, even if we prevail. Perhaps even more importantly, and I've been doing this type of work for 40 years in Florida, local governments, particularly counties, hold almost all the power when it comes to comprehensive planning. It was shifted to them many, many years ago when the State Land Planning Agency was taken away. The likely result, the likely result of litigation, if there's not a settlement, is that whether the cities win or lose, ultimately, we believe that the county will continue to pursue changes to their comprehensive plan, to zoning, land use restrictions, and ultimately, whatever it takes for them to approve further expansion, tying up the cities for years and costing millions of dollars with no certain outcome. If the cities ultimately lose, they ultimately, likely, will be obligated to pay both the county and Waste Management's attorney's fees, which are going to be considerable. The concessions that are contained in this settlement agreement, in my experience, are unprecedented. If we fail to approve this agreement tonight, I believe that these concessions will be off the table permanently, and we will be at the mercy, if you will, of the courts, of the governor and cabinet, and ultimately of the county again, who will go through the processes, as I mentioned, to try to make this happen. This is, in the opinion of the negotiating team, in my opinion personally, as your outside counsel, is this is the best possible result that you will be able to achieve under the circumstances, and I strongly recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you. Thank you all involved. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the city commission?
I'd like to hear from the public first.
Well, you want to hear from the public first before you make your comments? No problem. Do I have consensus on that? Yes? Okay. Is there anyone from the public that has signed up to speak on this subject, please?
Yes, Mayor, we have two individuals that signed up this evening to speak on this item. The first is Ron Shamai. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Thank you. And the second speaker is Jessica Simpson.
Thank you.
Okay, most of you guys know me, and I will start with what the mayor started and said this is an agreement and a compromise. Compromise is involving what I call is a win-win situation. A win-win situation is meaning that you lose some, you win some. I don't think we're winning anything. That's the end result. Do we have to sign it? Yes, we do. And that's after I had a very long email that I sent to all of you guys, five pages long, that I went over a lot of loopholes within this agreement. There's many loopholes that I don't envy the attorney that will need to fight them down the road against Waste Management, because Waste Management, maybe in 25 years or even less, will just not comply and try to do their best to get more. Most of us won't be even here, but we never know. I'll give you a sample. What happens if they don't get to the max? They stop one feet before. And then what? We don't have our public park that we're planning. Nobody can do anything about it. They just decided to stop before. So five years planning ahead before the time, nobody knows if they won't because they don't want to spend the money to do a park or to do a public service in the end. So we're basically going to be stuck. There's a lot of small loopholes. Now, after speaking with Ralph very lengthy yesterday on Sunday, I do understand every word he says, and I do believe that this is, we're in a worse situation, and basically you guys don't have any choice here. We need to sign it to give us the option to actually to go against them in the future. Because the minute they sign this contract, we have the tool that we can actually go against them if something is wrong. That's the only thing this contract basically gives us. Because I'll give you another example. There's all these measurements of bird watching, which shouldn't be, because it shouldn't be organic at all, but let's say birds and water and gas and everything that's written here, and it's all beautiful. Who's going to monitor it? Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to supervise that we actually check and we can read what they're sending us if they do it? We need experts on our side. Who's going to finance that? The $15,000 that they're giving us on a yearly basis, come on. And they're not raising it as we go. Why is the 5% of the host is only for five years? Why is it not for the whole period of the time? From Broward County. That's not from Waste Management. So there's a lot of questions, but if I go back to the bottom line, I don't think you guys have a choice. Sad to say, and I really hope that in 25 years, their attorney will be worse than ours when we go to fight them, because I believe they will try to fight it, especially when Ralph says that there's other places that they go up 500 feet and whatever. So, thank you for listening. Thank you for reading my emails, and I'm sorry if I bothered you guys too much, but I just care. Thank you.
Not at all. Thank you, Ralph. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate that.
The next speaker is Jessica Simpson.
Okay, then. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Tammy.
Hi, Tammy Luteri, 3302 Karen Bowles Circle South, Coconut Creek. I have serious concerns about their wastewater drier project. They are really big on waste to energy, which is incineration, and since that impacts the landfill directly, I think you should get more information from them about that particular project and how they plan on using the landfill gas. Are they going to try and sneak in something down the road? No doubt with the county's help, because the county is not as environmentally friendly as they like to claim, at least a majority on the commission. So that's number one. Because once they build, once they get those biosolids, then what are they going to do with it? Are they going to then use that to then fuel the incinerator they plan on refurbishing? Because that is a goal of the new master plan. So that concerns me. The other thing is, why just one mile, a one-mile radius of the landfill? What's to stop the county from giving up some of the community parks and then helping Waste Management or some other company build another project? I mean, like, there's Quiet Waters, which is three miles away, and they could easily say, here, take it. So I just think there's a lot not to trust when it comes to the Broward County Commission. And I mean that with all due respect, because they've rammed through an incinerator, a very old, dangerous incinerator, and they're giving us zero waste lens. They're not even focusing on any education to prevent, to mitigate this trash crisis that we're facing. They didn't even put composting in there. I mean, come on, you're all doing it. Deerfield is doing it, you're doing it. The county can't get their act together and give us composting? They're not even throwing us crumbs. They said, literally, well, eventually, we'll put it in there, but their main priority in Table 12? Get that Waste to Energy Subcommittee going. Establish that like yesterday. So composting, food waste recycling, it's not even in there. It's not formally in there. It's like, if we feel like it, if we get to it, we'll add it. So I don't trust them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tammy. Anyone else would like to speak on this matter? Thank you. Anyone on commission? Yes. Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, it's never easy going first, but I'm not a good politician. I'm a good fighter. I was a good combat soldier. So this fight that we're doing, it stings a bit. But the compromise is understood. When you have a fight, you have a compromise. Somebody's, you know, going to lose, somebody's going to be banged up, and we need to come to a resolution that we can all agree on. So I'm not sitting well with this, but I understand to take the W when we got it in our hand, and this is a W by getting them to commit to closing it. I have a few name ideas for it, maybe Fern Mountain. That'd be kind of cool, wouldn't it? So I just, I wanted to put out there that, you know, as much as this hurts to do it, we need to do it. It's in our hands. I don't know what my colleagues think about this, but I certainly want to walk away with something that we can give our kids as a closure and a win in this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Nope, sorry. Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So no, I just wanted to say I'm sorry for not being there in person. I'm currently at a mandatory training for my job in Herndon, Virginia, for the next few days, so I appreciate being able to log on through Zoom and technology. I appreciate Ralph saying unprecedented four times in his opening statement. Ralph, I feel your energy is to settle. It's very evident based on how you spoke, but you don't live here, you know? This is a huge decision for my peers and I tonight. I have two questions for you. Let's say the governor and the cabinet do rule in our favor. Let's just say this happened, and the governor, they did rule in our favor. What would be next?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. In my opinion, based on my experience, what would be next is that the county would absolutely go back to the drawing board, change their laws, change their ordinances, their zoning, and come right back to you with the same or worse situation.
And how long, how long of a process would that be? Would you estimate?
Couple of years.
Okay. And then you mentioned also that if we might have to, we would have to pay the county and Waste Management's legal fees. Can you, can you educate me on that?
Yes, sir. Under the law that we sued under, there is a strict prevailing parties provision. If the county and Waste Management win, the cities will have to pay their attorney's fees, and I can promise you they're going to be steep.
Got it. No, I understand, and there are some small victories here, like you and the city attorney mentioned. I know the city attorney and her staff have worked tirelessly on all of this. I know it's taken up probably 95% of their job, as they have many other things to do for our residents in our city. But I think I mentioned this when I spoke with Sheila and Terrell as well. It's the idea that you make this agreement, right? And in 25 years, you know, commissions change, leaders change, things change. And I think the first speaker, I don't know, maybe it was Ron or something, I think that might have been his name, he brought up that good point, right? Like, they couldn't build it up to like the one foot under. I find that very unique thinking. I didn't think of that, think of it like that. But I have thought that, like, hey, I was very worried, like, with Main Street a couple weeks ago, like, who says things aren't going to change from their site plans down the road when the markets change? And I get very worried about that. Terrell, can you just talk about, I know you mentioned it, just how binding this is? Because making a decision like this and, you know, giving into the big, you know, the big corporation is kind of upsetting, but I also, I just want to know, I want to hear from you about that.
Sure. Vice Mayor, I completely appreciate your concern, and I just want to mention that's part of why this agreement has what I like to call kind of a one-two punch. There is the restriction that they cannot expand beyond those approvals that were already approved by the county in February, in addition to the fact that once it fills up, that they have to close the landfill. I don't think that I would feel as comfortable if it was one or the other, but the fact that it is both, they have nowhere else that they can go as far as expansion, they can't somehow increase the slopes and move a little over to the southeast corner like they have threatened to do, and also, they would have to close once it fills up. We don't know how many storms there may be in the next few years. If there's a lot of storms, or if there's a lot of C and D, then it will fill up more quickly, and if there's not, it may take a little more time. We believe that it will take approximately 25 years, but that's from the date of the permit approvals, which should take approximately two years. So that's what we're looking at. I am comfortable with the declaration of restrictive covenants being filed in the public records, coupled with this settlement agreement and our ability to sue them if there's a breach, that provides us with the protection we need in order to enforce the terms of the agreement.
Okay, and then you mentioned, I think Tammy mentioned about the one mile, you know? Who brought the one mile to the table? Was it us, or was it them?
We had concerns that just because they agreed that they would not expand beyond the current footprint and the current approvals, that that wouldn't prohibit them from jumping across the street and utilizing some other properties that they own in the vicinity of the landfill for the purpose of landfilling. They came up with the one mile. You have to keep in mind that there are other zoning restrictions and other things in place that would come into play to the extent that they may apply to cite a new landfill, you know, somewhere else in the county. And that is something that we would have to address as that comes up. I believe that that would be a whole new application, and we would not be prevented or precluded from filing our objections and challenging them at that time if it's, if we have standing to do so, if it's within the city or close to the city limits.
Okay, thank you. I'll finish with this. You know, I think the entire commission has always, this commission is very passionate and about not letting it expand, and we've been at the commission meetings, we've fought so hard, and, you know, this is an interesting time for us as a unit and as a city to kind of get a closure date. I think Commissioner Brody, you know, he put it, he put it pretty good when he spoke. With that being said, it's a sad day, but I also know that one day, there'll be a happy day, and I look forward to when that day comes, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Rydell, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, kind of want to address some points Ron made as well, because I know, I know Ron professionally, he's an attorney, I'm an attorney, so we look at maybe through a different lens a little bit. I think something that's important to point out is, and Terrell, you can confirm it, I just think it's important kind of for the room. When you have the closure of a landfill, obviously, there's actually a DEP process that goes with that that starts years out as well. So I was actually concerned with that same point, Ron. That's actually addressed, that even if they choose not to go to the height on the wind down, that's the trigger date of the year mark. So even if they don't breach the height, as long as they get to a year, they could be restricted to close it eventually. They have to, right? So this guarantees the closure. The other important point about the restrictive covenant that I'll say to the room is, another company can't come in and purchase it. It becomes a restriction. So let's just say, you know, the waste group comes in and they rebrand, it's still bound under that umbrella as well that I like. And something that I'll share, that I shared with the city manager, I was unable to share with the commission due to sunshine, that came out of the informal meeting, and I think it's also really significant and important to point out, we have the mayor of Deerfield, we have a commissioner from Deerfield, and we have the recently retired mayor of Deerfield, through term limits, not by choice. So I think it's something that's really important that I'll share with publicly, is that you guys appointed an individual from your commission to attend an informal meeting as well. You had upper-level staff there, we had upper-level staff there, I was there, Sheila was there, Terrell. We had Broward County, we had Waste Management, an informal meeting. And something that's kind of scary, just to be totally honest, is when Waste Management has a map of all the area where there's FPL lines, all the area there's administrative buildings, and they go, we can get rid of all that with a price tag. We can pay to underground it, we can pay to landfill on it, we can pay to move it. So the importance of this agreement for the footprint is so significant to future expansion, future development, and also, they have the potential of owning a very large acreage site if they bought other companies' parcels right across the street. And that's really what I think is also very significant. Now, professionally, you get those moments where you have to settle, you don't have to settle, is this a good deal? Is this not a good deal? I will say, Ralph hit the nail on the head, and Vice Mayor, you asked the right questions of what would happen next. And what I view this as is, our biggest hope would be if we win, if we're not appealed, and if the entire Broward County Commission changes, then we would potentially have a shot in five years. Those are the ifs that would have to check. So if you look at the current makeup of the commission, a majority of the people that supported the expansion have roughly another eight years in office, right? So that puts the same group of people voting on the same item, where Broward County would just have to change a comp plan amendment, environmental, and a solid waste study, that gets them there. So if you're looking at to check the boxes to push it out, to me, it makes it a lot less of a decision, more of a mandate, much like the Coconut Creek City Commission had in 2015, when at that time, there was a groundbreaking agreement made as well. So it shows the advocacy. And I want to address something that Tammy said, because I think it's relevant. As a member of the Solid Waste Executive Committee, if I ever reported to this commission that I felt like we had a group of people that were advocating for us, I would have a different position tonight. The Solid Waste Authority has not, while we had a good chair and good members that are supportive, have never, as a group, collectively helped anything the city of Deerfield Beach or the city of Coconut Creek have fought for. So that was a group that we had really wishful thinking for, which I still sit on, I'm doing the work, we have a new master plan. I saw you, Tammy, when they went forward with a meeting with nobody there, but it was, it was a quick one. But that's really significant, because if a lot of the county commissioners were looking to the Solid Waste Authority master plan, they were looking for a reason. Solid Waste Authority didn't give them one. So, good, bad, or indifferent, it kind of is what it is in that vehicle. I think some of these points are really crucial. I think Ralph, I appreciate it, and candidly, I don't want to take this, take it as the wrong way, but we've allotted Ralph a lot of money, taxpayer money, to continue litigating. Ralph could make a lot of money if Ralph got on this call and said, let's keep fighting. And I say that as somebody that's a vendor of the city, that we hired an independent law firm, we hired an expert. So the fact that he's on this meeting is so significant to me. Professionally, he's a very ethical guy. For him to say, listen, this is, this is a big deal, to me, makes my decision a lot easier, and at the end of the day, I view this as, we fought and we won. That's how, I really do see it that way. And I think there is some win-win, and I think the other important thing is that in the future, for anybody, for anyone that's here, for anyone that's listening, regrettably, municipalities can't litigate personal injury cases. So if there is in the future a true Aaron Brockovich moment, there is a massive public safety, health issue, the city of Deerfield Beach, the city of Coconut Creek can't be those people that are the plaintiffs. A neighborhood association or an individual can. They have other independent claims that they can make in a court of law that cities are precluded on, how we're litigating right now administratively. So this doesn't stop anybody from that, this just stops the city of Coconut Creek from that, really. And the city of Deerfield Beach, you know, hopefully, they ratify it at their meeting tomorrow evening. So while I do believe this is extraordinarily significant, and I'm really happy, because in that informal settlement meeting, there was some non-tangibles that now are tangibles. So I support this agreement this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, would you mind if we heard from Commissioner Welsh first, and then we'll allow you to speak?
Commissioner Welsh? Thank you, it's up to, it's your pleasure, Mayor. Okay. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. And I'll just highlight one thing that you touched on, Commissioner Rydell, and I wrote down the word billable, the billable hours that our friend and our expert attorney that has been so significantly suggesting that he's backing out of additional future billable hours to the cities as a result of his recommendation. Because the other night, I think I said during the commission comments that if our city attorney were not on salary and were on billable hours, it would almost equate to what Ralph is making now. But this journey started with Waste Management when I was on commission for the, what ended up being the 2013 Waste Management settlement agreement for the amount of producible waste that could go into Waste Management. And I remember sitting side by side with their attorney at the workshop, going through that settlement, and I realized how significant that was, that we were able to get that as a takeaway. But it came through a significant amount of community input, community outrage, if you will, about what was happening over there that was influencing and affecting our residents. Some folks couldn't go out in their backyard because they had breathing issues because of all the smell and the odors that were coming from the landfill at that time, and it was in various communities, Banyan Trails over in the Equestrian Farms. I don't know that San Molina rose up to the township, significant number of residents that were affected, and rose to the occasion to really bolster our efforts to be able to go forward with that. So it, but you have to realize when you can go forward and make what the community wants, and we as this commission would like to see happen on behalf of our residents to this giant mountain that continues to grow. And I really appreciate, just offside, the camaraderie and the collaboration and the affiliation with our neighboring city, Deerfield Beach, under the guise of Mayor Gantz before and now through you, Mayor Drodsky, and your commission. I listened in to your commission meetings, and I I listen into your commission meetings, and I'm really thoroughly amazed at the new commissioners that have come up to speed on this particular issue. And we appreciate it very much so, because it does affect your city and your residents to live directly in light of north of the Waste Management site. So knowing that, I really wanted a date, I wanted to have a year that we could see and promise our residents and you yours, that this would actually close. We could count on it, we could put it in the books, and then I would say we would have succeeded. But knowing that the restrictive covenant and the capability to hold their feet to the fire should they breach, I mean, the 15,000 a year, let's face it, is, like you said, Ron, chump change, and really doesn't even significantly address all of the staff time that is continuously looking at Wiles Road and all of the other places where the litter falls off, and our police patrolling, trying to keep the trucks with their covers over their loads before they head off through there. So it really has been all hands on deck getting here, and our city manager and our city attorney, through the collaboration of our special counsel that we've had, have really worked very, very hard to get it to this stage that we are today. And I was very mad when I looked at it. I didn't really even want to read the settlement, because knowing that we didn't have the date, but knowing that we did have some things that we could count on for our future residents after we're not here, and really threw me in the direction to settle. It's not, I can't say it's a happy day, but at least knowing that we have something that will be recorded and can be utilized for the future gives me some hope. So I am in favor of taking the settlement. And again, thank you for everyone that came tonight.
Thank you. Before, Commissioner Brody?
I just want to add one caveat. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak one more time. Just one more caveat. You know, I think part of this deal too, is I think we as a city need to step up and watch Wiles Road. I think there is 150 trucks that go on Wiles Road heading to that dump, and I'm going to be honest with you, when I heard the number, I thought they were joking, because I was, it was impossible that we had that many trucks going from Lyons Road to Wiles Road to that dump. It was actually 156, but six of them didn't go there. 150 semi-trucks with the trash going down between two residential neighborhoods. So I think as a city, we need to step up our game too, and maybe get traffic involved, and let's get some to kind of slow that down a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
Thank you for the second opportunity, real quick. And first of all, I have to thank the city attorney for a lot of help. She provided my community and answering a lot of my questions and concerns, and being there almost every time I asked something, actually being there every time I asked something. But I want to ask a question now. As a lawyer, you always think about the criminal side of it, and how you can fool the system. I just thought about something. In the contract, it states that this is not a cancelable contract, if I'm correct. It's not terminated. You can't terminate the contract. But on the other hand, it can be terminated by the court. That means that if, down the road, they do something wrong and don't stand behind their word of what they're supposed to do, which is part of why we're signing this, or a major issue why we're signing it, is we're going to sue them. And then we're going to sue them for not supervising the birds, or whatever the water. At that time and point, can the court basically say, "You know what? You win about, you won the case about the water, but Waste Management is now canceling the contract. We'll bring that issue into the court and say, okay, we're canceling the whole contract one, and we negotiate the whole thing." And basically put us back 10 years back to the table. I mean, is there a protection against us if we put a lawsuit against them, and the court, due to that, will cancel the contract?
May I, Mayor? Excellent question, Ron, and thank you again to you and your community. It was my pleasure to go and meet with all of you, and I'm here if you have any questions about this or anything else that I can help with. There is a provision for severability in the contract, meaning that to the extent that there would be a lawsuit brought to challenge some provision of the contract, and the court were to determine that part of it was not valid for some reason, maybe it was somehow illegal, then the court could sever off that part of the agreement and the rest of it would remain. That is a standard clause that we put in all of our contracts in order to provide for that level of protection, so that way, if there is, you know, that weird anomaly, that weird situation where maybe one part of it is deemed to be unenforceable for some reason or illegal, the rest of the agreement remains valid. Additionally, what the contract really provides for is that it's not really cancelable, except that, well, it's up to the cities of Deerfield Beach and Coconut Creek to enforce it, and with a majority vote of both commissions, it could be undone, but that's it. It's not up to the county to enforce it. The county has their regulatory agency and authority over the landfill, and so they have expressly stated that because they are acting most of the time in a regulatory capacity over the landfill, they will not be enforcing this agreement. It's going to be up to the cities to make sure that Waste Management is following what is required. So I believe that those two things will provide us with the level of protection that we need to make sure that the agreement is enforceable long-term, and that our interests are accounted for and remain in place.
This battle, for me, started as a resident many, many years ago. I am a resident of Windmore. We've suffered the effects many years ago when we didn't have regulations that governed the odor, the birds, the smell. It just, our resident, the fumes that were in the air, you could actually see it and smell it and taste it, for God's sakes. I mean, it was a battle. Our residents rallied up. I became president, and we rallied. We're, I'm talking hundreds of residents that went to the meetings, that protested. Actually, our friends and our fellow elected officials from Deerfield, side by side, we fought Waste Management, we fought the county. I want to thank, I especially want to thank Commissioner Rydell and Commissioner Welsh for being on Solid Waste and for representing us all the way through and continuing to represent us. Did we get what we want? Not everything. Are we better off than when we started? Definitely. It's a bitter pill to swallow, but it would be financially irresponsible for us to continue and to do battle. The entire staff has worked endless hours on this, as everyone involved. So I want to say, we'd love to celebrate, but it's not a celebratory moment, it's not a satisfying moment, but at least we can say to the future residents of Windmore that we did whatever we could to get what we can for you and to give you the best quality of life right now, to ensure that our future isn't going to be worse. And there's a very strong possibility, we continue this fight, everything can go away, and everything could fall apart. Are we willing to roll the dice? I don't think so. So I have to say, I as well support this settlement agreement and hope we can move forward, and only pray that Waste Management and our county commissioners will do the right thing in the future. Thank you. Any further comments from commission? All right, thank you. All right. City clerk, are there any other members from the public, or anyone that has a comment for us?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve Agenda Item 4? Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Commissioner Brody. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Rayly?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and for your comments. Meeting adjourned.